Okay. Okay, preference. Okay, it's 5:30 PM. I will go ahead and call the City of Bellevue Idaho Common Council Meeting on Monday, April 14th, 2025 at 5:30 to order. A reminder, please mute your cell phones except for emergency personnel. And if you're on Zoom, please mute and raise your hand in order to be called on to speak if there's something on the agenda that applies to you. Will you please do a roll call?
Mayor Devani?
Yes.
Has it been Council President Shay?
Present, yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
As in?
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Odena?
Yes.
Notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204 within 48 hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall Post Office and on the city's website on April 10th, 2025.
I move that the notice for the April 14th, 2025 meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you. Call for conflict as outlined in Idaho Code 74-404. Any conflict?
I don't have any conflict.
Anyone else? Item three, mayor and council update. I'll kick us off with just a brief mayor update. We put out some information in our newsletter that went out on Friday. So just a reminder, if you aren't subscribed, subscribe to Bellevue City News, which is the Bellevue official newsletter that goes out, written communications coming from the City of Bellevue out to the community. Please feel free to subscribe to receive notifications of the agenda for all the for the city council meetings and a few highlights of what's happening within the city. Just some gentle reminders about building permits. Spring has is has sprung, it appears. And it is, you know, a time where everyone's out getting excited to build, put up fences, things like that. So just reminders to apply for permits as necessary. Put a couple highlights in the newsletter for you. And of course, our Community Development Director, Brian is available to answer questions. And our website has information about what is needed in terms of permitting. We have seen the leaves be cleared from the parks. But with that, we have seen a reveal of a lot of leftover dog excrement from the season. And I think that it is just a nice gentle reminder time to say, use the poop bags that are at the park, please. And or utilize the ones that you provide for yourself. And please be part of keeping the city clean, keeping the parks clean. So that when people go to use the park, there isn't something they're stepping in and having to deal with. So please be responsible dog owners. And with that, we'll mention it again, but there's an ERC cleanup in in coordination with the City of Bellevue that's happening. The date on that again, Jessica?
It's May 3rd and it's from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then La Cavanita will be donating burritos to only Bellevue volunteers. Because last year we had people come from Haley.
Hmm.
Down here for lunch.
That's a clarification that we can make again on our other newsletter and social media promotions. But just all in the spirit of cleaning up the city and kind of being a part of the cleanup. So.
And then and then the coordination tomorrow will be on the commissioner's agenda to weigh the fees of tires, broken down appliances, furniture, scrap wood, and possibly yard waste. And I'm just either trying to figure out if we have to haul that ourselves, that to Ohio Gulch or if Mike at Clear Creek, it's going to get us in containers. I'm still going back and forth on that.
So when we have those answers, we'll put that on our social media and in our newsletter as well. Because that our next one go out before the cleanup happens. And then I just want to draw your attention to a couple of the flyers that we have kind of scattered around City Hall. We have some at the station there that we'd love for you to take home. There is a survey out that we have circulating in both English and Spanish. It's surrounding our community project. We do have a presentation about that on the agenda tonight, so we'll give a little more information. But please take flyers, kind of spread it around. We'd love our Bellevue citizens to really participate as much as possible in giving feedback and opinions on this survey as kind of the first initial touch of community involvement with our community project.
This is the same survey that you asked, you know?
Uh, that is a separate one. But we did do printouts there in your binder, Sean, and on the right side where it has a QR code.
The other right?
Or the left side, I apologize. Yeah. And I'm sure there's things I left out, but that's just kind of my light touch mayor report for now. And I want to open it up to the council if the council has anything else to add for their council report. Okay. I will go ahead and move on to item number four. This is public comment, and this is for items and concerns that are not on the agendas for tonight. If you're in City Hall, please feel free to raise your hand. Or if you're on Zoom, put your little hand up on there. And please limit your comments from three to five minutes. So I will go ahead and open public comment. Yes.
Just with the spring cleanup and everything going on, any residents that have an alleyway, please remember that garbage debris and piles of bricks, wood are not permitted in the alleyways. We need you to get to our water meters and access those. And then if you do have a open access to your water meter or an animal that's missing, please let us know. We're trying to get around and look at it as part of our pop and other things that we're working on. But we'll get that out in the next newsletter. I just wanted to bring that up tonight.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands in City Hall and seeing no hands on Zoom, I will go ahead and close public comment. We're going to move on to item number five. This is the consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes, March 25th, 2020, 24, 2025. Regular meeting minutes. Any questions on the minutes? Item five, or item five B, approval of claims, March 25th through April 14th, 2025. Any questions?
I had a question about, uh, who's Kami Backstrom? The staff?
We, yes, she is a new employee under the Public Works Department.
She's the one I saw on the streets today?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes.
Yeah.
And.
And we've been on.
Yeah.
Kami?
It's actually Kami.
Kami.
Yeah.
I know, I was like, who's the new gal? Great.
And that division is what you said, I'm sorry. Did you say that?
She is in the Public Works, slotted on their water operator apprentice. But with our staffing, we are we're diversifying and getting everybody trained in all departments. So we're we're going to eliminate actual subdepartments. So we can help get our own staff on and get off contracts quicker.
And that's a great idea.
So does this apply to the BDE consulting? Isn't that is that contract?
No, that that doesn't. Kami is an internal internal hire.
Oh, no, I understand that. But is that the type of pencil? Is this applied to getting, we're still paying for a BDE consultant?
We would contact the BD consultants till the end of June.
Till the end of June. But this is part of replacing those services.
This is just part of rebuilding our departments, council.
It is a budget deposition.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions on claims?
Not me.
Item five C, department head reports. We have a department heads here to answer any questions you have as needed from the department head reports.
I was wondering, there's the Marshall.
We have a representative.
I was wondering if you guys knew, well, my thing, part of what I know that March wanted to do was make sure that we have the transparency information up on the website about the block system. And if that was something maybe that was May or June, then that's still something he thought they might be able get it up. And just wanted to remind you to get in touch with community services when you are ready to put that stuff up.
Yeah, we just did the training this past week on all of that and like how the transparency report will be able to be created so that we can share.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Chris, I've got a question for you. Even though your update does talk about resurfacing of Main Street, any recent information on that? Because I know those guys get booked up pretty quickly for the season. And I am hoping that they will come back and finish.
So there is a monthly road and bridge meeting down in Shoshone that has everybody from Gilman and Doka, Twin Falls up to here that attends that. My last one, I didn't make this month, but I made the previous months. And I spoke to the engineering director at our Area 4 ITD. They were putting the bid out instead of be put out the following week. I have not had a chance yet to do a follow up with him and see if they haven't received any bids. I've reached out to him a couple of times, but I haven't heard back from him. So I will follow up and I will send an email to the council members this week.
Thank you very much.
One second. So for tonight, just to make it easy, let's just raise kind of our hand so I can acknowledge you and then I have a call on you. So go ahead, Tammy?
I wasn't sure if we settled on who was going to, if there was any follow up on the mobile home that burned down and somebody was coming to look into whether there was some follow up to that. So I didn't know.
Ryan, can you?
Yes, I spoke to our building official. He suggested contacting the State Fire Marshal Office if we want to move forward with forcibly requiring them to demolish the structure. I did get a call from the property owner last week and they're planning on submitting a demo program the next week or two. Getting it off their water meter.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Great to see the new crosswalk flags. Is there any news from IDT or who repaints the crosswalks on Main Street? And is there a schedule for that?
That'll follow with the resurfacing project. They're not going to paint it and then resurface it after repainted again. We've asked if we can paint it. They said use just regular white paint if we want to do it. But since it is their property and they are going to be doing it, I don't see it as far as our budget if we get to it here in the next month.
Okay, so it's there, it looks like they'll resurface.
With the resurfacing from ITD, they're they will reline or repaint the lines.
The lines are placed with crosswalks.
And then I, is there a maintenance schedule for the pothole filling that has been going on and and how residents can know when you'll be in their neighborhoods? I see you've gotten some done and I was wondering where and if people could know where that was happening and when.
We basically do an evaluation. We identify the biggest holes in the city and then we work in quadrants and try to hammer out as many as we can in a day. So there is real no schedule. Right now, it's kind of a tertiary thing. As they have time in the afternoon, when it's warmer weather, when the holes are dried out, they're getting out there. So unfortunately, I don't have an actual schedule to to share. But we try to do it in a quadrant, make it efficient, get as much as we can one day, and then we'll get back on the next day.
And this is filling with asphalt?
It's called a cold mix. So it's has some oil, some compacting. But right now with the state of our roads and without having a proper base, it's the best we have until we we may fire up the, I forget what the trailer's called, but we do have a hot mix that we can use. But it's coming up with, you know, we just bought 28 tons of the cold mix at around $4,000. The hot mix is going to be exponentially more expensive.
That's the sun rock cold patch?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And so there isn't a schedule. So this is tertiary. So what is primary and secondary?
We've been trying to get our equipment maintenance from this winter. So it's put away for the summer. Training staff on, we've had a couple instances in the state that DEQ has sent out notices and getting training, safety and really, I mean, Casey does the streets. I let him have the flexibility and what he calls, we've gotten some more of our equipment. That's just dead useless equipment that we've got back down to Jerome to surplus or to salvage. I think we had an old, what do you call it? An old sweeper that was about, I think we got $300 for it. So the hours, the manpower, everything, we broke even on it, but it's no longer just sitting in our in our yard. Continue to clean up on the yard and looking at how we can use our actual, what is it called? We have a hundred thousand dollars for an actual project. And so we're identifying which road or which areas of town that can be best applied and present that to council.
And then I guess the final question, a few residents were asking about a timeline and details for the sewer repairs, specifically the odors. Is there within your timeline and the odor problem being persistent? Do you see that in your timeline, a certain part that you don't have to keep triaging it is what they were asking.
So we've been purchasing a chemical called OxyPro. It's about $3,500 of tote. I am looking at purchasing an oxygen generator, which is a 120 volt plug in that will supply 20% oxygen directly into the system that will cost less than one tote and provide the same type of service. We are at spring, the ponds have melted off and it just has an annual rotation where the bugs and everything, they do what's called a turnover. So last week, about Wednesday, Thursday, it did start having some odor. I went down there this morning. You couldn't smell anything unless you are right on top of it at the south end. So we've adjusted the OxyPro, increased the dosage to help with the odor. We're doing what we can with it. The actual timeline, we are hoping to get at least the main plant in operation so we can fill the membrane holding cells with fresh water, rinse them and have the Eolia come in. We want to see them in here July. At the latest, have this plant on partial operation through September, but full operation by October 1st.
Okay, so I think they were asking, can you make that information available?
I can't because I'm having supply chain issues and I don't know when certain valves, motors or pumps. So I'm not going to put a definitive timeline.
So what I what I will be working on with Chris Johnson, Public Works Department is a timeline graphic that doesn't have hard and fast dates on there, but has imagery that will show you the steps of the process with a a flag in essence visual that says where we are in the process without committing to those hard dates. But as the as progressions happen, there will be a visual representation of progression and project updates on that. So that will, I hope will be available within the next month. So I'll make that commitment.
Okay.
That will have that visual graphic within the next month up on the website. Hopefully with your, you know, help Suzanne in that transparency center that we're working on.
Great.
Yeah.
Just a comment on that. I did run into Jeff Neal the other day who lives down there. And he said it's been much better than it's ever been, but it also depends on the direction of the wind right now.
With with the, again, the ice coming off the ponds and then with the heating up into the seventies towards the end of last week, it did have a very earthy, I mean, somebody called me up at nine o'clock at night saying it was unbearable. It wasn't unbearable. It was just noticeably worse than it had been. We've been working down there three to four hours. I've got the electricians down there every day. You know, I go down there first thing in the morning. And it's one of the last stops I make at night just to check on it and see what the smell is and see what the odor is. We're doing the best we can, but we are dealing with a biological operation. We have no control over it and it doesn't happen with an on off switch. Now it takes adding a new chemical or increasing the aeration or doing something which could take two to three days before you start seeing it correcting itself.
For your questions, answers, Suzanne?
Yes, but I think that so, but there is, when you get to that part or whatever part of the graphic, there's a point at which you aren't doing this, right? This isn't that the the system rebuild deals with this odor issue more effectively than it can be dealt with now. Right? That's part of.
I think we're still done with biology. I mean, even though we're using a very fine membrane system, there's still a potential for smell. It is a wastewater plant. We're dealing with bugs. We're dealing with fecal matter. We do our best to maintain it. We do our best to chlorinate it. We do our best to provide it. We've gotten the sensors installed for the H2S. We're just waiting for, there's a certain set of chemicals. We thought it was a package kit to get it zeroed and make sure that, you know, the H2S and ammonia's are at safe levels. We're doing what we can. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time on the department head reports? Enough. I would.
Second.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney? Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Odena?
Yes.
The motion passes.
You. Item six, public hearing. This is LLA-25-01 TBD Lewis Lane, Judy and Keith Myers. An application for a lot line adjustment for lots one through six, block 96 of the Bellevue Town Site original plot. The proposed lot line adjustment will reconfigure the existing six parcels into three parcels and include a request for waivers from code requirements. Ryan?
All right, thank you. This one, we have been working with the applicant as well as the land trust, who is the conservation holder over the power preserve, which is property adjacent to there. Our options, I think, to potentially incorporate some of this property into the power preserve. But we want to make sure that plan is as feasible as we can make it at this point. And so we still need to look at a few items with the land trust. So at this time, we're asking you guys open public hearing and then continue it to the April 28th.
Not. Reese. Yeah. I guess without having, there's no, there's nothing in here though. There's no supporting documents for us to look at. Does it matter? Like it's a show.
They'll leave privately.
I guess I mean like having an open, a public comment, our public hearing opening that with nothing, no supporting documents, I guess. I wasn't sure that that's the, that that's the appropriate way to do it.
I I think part of that process, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we did notice this as a public hearing. And so in order to not have to renotice it and charge the applicant for that renotice fee, we'll just continue this on the record to a date certain. I would move then. Mayor?
Yes.
Are stepping in.
Okay.
To continue the public hearing.
Before you do that, I'm going to open it first. Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing for LLA-25-01, a lot line adjustment for Keith and Judy Myers located at TBD Lewis Lane. And I would take.
Is, do you want to close the public?
Oh, I apologize.
Then just.
Brian, really quick, I have someone behind you with their hand up to ask a question.
My name.
Yeah.
Will there be public comment when you take it up again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing.
Mayor, I would move to continue the public hearing for the Myers lot line adjustment to on the record to April 28th, 2025.
Councilmember Odena?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Question happened.
I'm a little, Matt, one a little, everyone? Okay, moving on to item seven, presentation. We will open up with seven A presentation for Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation Community Project Grant, Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for Health Staff. Come on up. I would, I would love for you to stand. If you feel like you need something to lean against, we can move the stations.
Like this?
Yeah. If you kind of pivot that.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then I think my paraplegic should have been included in the.
Yeah. It is. And then Amy, if you just give her a moment, she's going to pull it up on the computer.
You can see a grateful deck in a red solo cup. So I know that this you guys are, this can be a fight. So I'm really excited for this. Um, so Mayor, Kelly, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this Monday afternoon evening about the reach that we can meet in Bellevue as we receive from Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation. And I'm here today just to try to explain who we are, what we do, and hopefully talk about this partnership that we must tell our office. So next page, please. And just to introduce myself, my name is Courtney Fath. I am the. What's that? Yeah. Is that over here right there?
Need some water, Tom.
So I'm the executive director for Blue Cross Idaho Foundation for Health. As you can see, we have, our vision is help your Idaho, help your future. And our values are on the left or right hand side. And two of the things that I really want to point out, and I will re belabor this because you can read, is continuous learning and building relationships. The reason why work here today is around a grant that was founded in listening to our partners and building the relationships we need to create a help your Idaho forever. So so we we address the root causes that impact health. And what that looks like is where you eat, play, pray, all of the things that actually impact your health on an everyday basis, not just what happens in your 45 minute doctor appointment every year. So that's what we look at when we are talking about health. We address those in three areas, community, which I have overseen, education and healthcare. When I say community, community looks different to everyone, but community actually means working with municipalities, city councils, communities, truly with a belief that your zip code predicts your health more than your genetic code. And you're seeing more and more data around that point. So when we say about community, this ranch that I'm here to talk about is under that pillar that I oversee. Main programs over this pillar are up above the mayor's walking challenge, which your mayors have participated in the past, which is getting mayors out in their communities, walking around their towns, walking in different parts of their areas that they never knew about. And in October, they walk, they win funds for their community partner department. The Community Health Academy, which Chris and Shelley have participated in before. It's a six month learning collaborative for mayors and city staff to learn about what does community help mean? And how does municipalities actually greatly impact the health of their communities? And then the community transformation. So for years and years, we have been doing these these programs. And before launching into my other slide, I do. And um before launching into my other slide, I do want to take a moment and pause and say, working with Frank and Shelley was an incredible experience. I really, really appreciate your thought leadership and actually um teaching me so much about community. Um, I really appreciate it. I um I certainly obviously serve the state of Idaho, uh, and I'm in Boise. That really doesn't um reflect a lot of uh Idaho, and so we really need to listen and learn from our partners. And you you both are very, very uh good learning partners, and I just have learned a great deal from you. So thank you for all of your feedback. Okay, um, anyway, so through those programs, starting in about twenty nineteen, we started hearing from our partners in all three of those sectors about what else they're seeing in their community when it comes to uh what impacts their community. Around the same time, we issued a landscape analysis around what uh health factors are impacting our state the most. That is the um, that is the report that you can see on the left hand side. And then you can also see um some stats on the right hand side, and this is from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. There's this something happened in that time, you can guess. Um, continuously, we're seeing more and more people not only uh feel a lack of belonging, uh, a lack of support, a lack of um community well-being, and um the rise of the epidemic of loneliness and isolation. We're continuously seeing more and more mayors talk to us, saying that this force is high on their priority, that we can't get anything done, whether we're talking about community help or something else, if we don't have, if we're getting back to, if we can't get back to the space that we were in. Um, more and more data is showing that sense of belonging is now actually impacting your physical and mental well-being. Really feeling like a place that you live in actually feels like home does have an impact on our only adults and children. So one of our biggest values is community. So if our partners are telling us overwhelmingly that this is an issue in their communities, uh, we decided that we should do something about it. So um next slide, we created the community project. And this is uh bringing Idaho neighbors together through a outdoor space. Now, what are the two things we thought we could do really well? We know that we work with cities and municipalities really, really well. Our procurement system works well together. We have seen really great sustainable transformational change when it comes to community health when working with municipalities. And we also know that we've worked with uh mayors and outdoor spaces as well. There were some learning lessons there for a while. Um, don't ask me to build a bridge because that is complicated. Um, I've learned that, yeah, they have the walking bridge. No, don't do that. That's ridiculous. No. Um, but uh, this is where this uh this uh where we actually came from. This is where we're launching it. Um, I will say, I feel like it's still a little bit in the pilot process. This is the third round. Um, but we I do think that we are ironing out it pretty well. Again, how do we create a space or give some momentum of our skills or training or uplift communities to make sure that we are a welcoming community for our health of our community? So if you scroll down, um, technically, if you go online, the goal of the community project is to strengthen relationships in a sense of solidarity, among the community members through the development of an outdoor space that brings people together. What in the world does that actually mean in practice? Well, I'll give you an example. Um, and one of our first partners that we worked with was the city of Wendell, and I assume everyone knows where Wendell is at. Yep. Yes. Oh, um, so the city of Wendell uh received this grant. They had a piece of uh, they had a piece of land that it's just perfect for a pocket park on outskirts of town where they didn't have accessibility uh accessible to any other parks outs on that part of town. So we started working with Wendell, and we didn't really know what that meant. And so really, the mayor and the city council, very, very similar to what we have going on today. We said, how do we make sure the city feels a sense of belonging when we don't know what we're belonging to? Everyone has a different definition of what Wendell is. So we did a whole bunch of uh and the supports that we provided. Um, community focus groups, community focused groups, surveys, community conversations, uh conversations with high school seniors. And all of a sudden, hub, the hub city was something that no matter what definition they said or what they wanted city to be or not to be, they realized that the hub meant something to that space. We created then the campaign Love the Hub. Love the Hub ended up spreading like wildfire, even though the um city council thought it was a little bit pouring at a birth, but they said Love the Hub ended up being a huge, huge rallying call for this community. So we have high schoolers that have cool stickers on their tumblers that say Love the Hub or on their Macs, a sticker on there. We have utility trucks that actually have Love the Hub on the back of uh them. They have um community events, like community cleanups and parades with the slogan of Love the Hub. Now, this was a part of their grant. This is what came from that grant. With the Love the Hub project and theme, that's what they ended up having as the theme of their park, which is called Hub City Park. This is where we're gonna celebrate the hub, and this is what that ended up looking like for each community. So I just wanted to point that out. Every single community is a little bit different. The city of Chubbick received this grant as well, and Chubbick is actually trying uh getting their urban renewal grant. I'm gonna create a new uh downtown space. And they also uh were wanting to make sure that the surveys and community outreach they received not only benefited the pocket park, but also what their new downtown looked like. So they incorporated the survey results and what we did with this grant into into their um downtown region. Um, in the city of um, in the city of Peat, who also received this grant, um, they used some of the feedback on for their next rendition of uh edits of their uh comprehensive plan. So they saved some money on that for their comprehensive plan. So if you want to scroll, so what is it? So what is this? So uh the city actually receives two, two assets in this. A city receives a uh eighty five thousand dollar grant for an out outdoor space. Right? You also receive technical assistance and project management assistance with an organization called Reynolds Myers. They will do project management. They will do community outreach, uh, community focused groups, community engagement. That's what they will do. That's a huge part of this. And the reason why we incorporated it into this grant is we know that when people feel heard, they feel like they belong. When, so if we can create materials, whatever that looks like for your community, or do you train or get um more information, that will um that will support the, again, switchy goal of getting community to feel community. Um, we will, uh, you guys also receive community engagement materials and support and funding support for a community celebration. We want to make sure that you all receive the uh kudos in support of doing this type of grant. Uh, we will step out of it. You can see right there, um, it's a quote from the mayor Driggs. Um, it's been a win-win as a whole. So many different aspects of this grant really made a big difference in little ways. Uh, so again, it is, I wanted to make a city council presentation because it's a different kind of grant. Typically, grants are writing check, walk away. Do you want I bug Brian for Brian or Chris for a grant report in about eighteen months, and then it's done? This one would really close side to side together and give you more than this. We've seen these assets who have working with technical, this and technical assistance portion really benefits smaller communities. We even did a logo design for one of the community's visas. We re, we heard from their community, I mean, it's just us, like, we don't need our management. We're just this community. We're just this community. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, people put put respect on that uh that uh city's name. So we did a logo preview with community input, and it was really, really fun. So I um, that is what uh cities receive. Uh, this year, only one city was selected for this grant, and it was the city of Bellevue. So kudos to everyone who was involved in that grant, grant application. Um, this by far is the uh heaviest applied branch that we get at the foundation. Um, and we were only um able to uh support one uh grant this year, and so Bellevue definitely was um a hundred percent unanimously from the grant committee, but was ranked number one. Um, so huge kudos to your team here. Um, you want to scroll? Yes, we can divide, define, design, and connect is a saying we have with this grant, and that's what we hope to do. Uh, really define what it means for your community uh to have this outdoor open space, design it with your community so that they can all connect. Um, so what does this look like? Um, may I? Um, so this is what um we call, we can kind of the pathway. This is where we will be at. This grant ends uh in October, so October. Um, so this is October. But you will see that this is where we're going with this grant. This long portion between outreach and outreach and engagement and insight consolidation is making sure that our technical assistance experts can really make sure to package all of that data for you um in the most professional and um uh comprehensive way, and you will receive all data that we collect. So you can use it for maybe parks, uh parks information for for the future or anything like that. So right now, we're in the communications engagement audit where we look and see how you got, how Bellevue communicates with its residents, how residents want to be communicated with, and then communicate uh communications and engagement brainstorm of what do we want to do more? What do we want to do less? And what, where are some uh places of improvement and celebration? And now we're at the engagement plan, is really making sure how we are gonna engage in this process for the city of Bellevue. What works for your community? What doesn't? Maybe uh, maybe uh, community members always go to a certain place on a Thursday night at five P M. Then we need to make sure that we will get community input at that date. And then um the team at Reynolds and Myers and myself will be doing outreach and engagement throughout the summer, and uh we want to snack some of the the kids while they're in school too. And then right there, we will present to the committee that we've been working with um the implementation plan, where we will present what your community is wanting from the outdoor space, amenities that you want from the outdoor space. If we can finesse it a little bit more, and then your community share out. Um, and then a groundbreaking. This is where we very much step away, and then you will take the reins and say, thank you, community, of what we've learned. Now let's rock and roll and uh put some shovels in the ground. Um, the biggest thing here is something that I really um uh, I don't want to say mandatory, but mandatory, is when the community is at asking very clearly for a project, the city needs to be open to accepting that. Um, that was a pretty big requirement. Now, mind you, I am not going to present them multimillion dollar rec center in a multimillion dollar pool and say, hey, guys, this is what your community wants. That's not what we're gonna do. It is going to be really tailored to um a a project that is man manageable by the city. We'll work very, very closely with Brian and Chris on that and making sure that what we present to the community, we can actually fulfill. So um, and then so community share out, this will be then where you all take it, take it over, and hopefully um we'll just then come back and help celebrate once either shovels are in the ground or once you have a ribbon cutting celebration, this is something that we would like to um uplift and support you all as well. So next question, and that's, that's question. Any questions? So um it is a, I call it a fluffier grant than you would. You know, we're talking about seeing each other as neighbors, bringing together neighborly conversation, things like that. So I want to just make, I know that the R O I is a little bit strange when you're talking about the sense of belonging in a community, but we're just seeing that place-based organization and things like parks and walking spaces and community spaces are so, so critical for this community, the sense of community and community pride. So we want to make sure to amplify it in any way we can in throughout Idaho. And so um I am excited that it's been very, very rewarding already working with mayor. You're so good. Um, your questions are, yeah, you know what you're talking about. Um, so thank you for for working with us, and I am open to any conversation or questions you may have for me. Yes, ma'am?
Um, Jessica. Um, uh, so communications and like engagement, and then you're going out to the community and I like in experience, you guys have a lot of experience with larger Hispanic communities, because I think.
Yeah, and one thing that we need sure we did especially in Wendell is bringing translators and transreme services into that uh that that space. And so we'll be leaning on the team of a of that, you know, who do you want or have a trusted partner here for for that?
And then when does the survey end? Like, when are you trying to capture?
Great question. I should know that. Um.
We had set a date, a tentative date, I think, with the team that it was mid May, mid May to the end of May if needed.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I didn't cut that off the top of my head.
Okay. Great.
And that's just, the survey is the, is the initial touch.
Yeah, yeah. If you think about it, and I feel like you guys are mountain challenge, that like, you know, when there's a big log or stump, and then someone's like, hey, I'm gonna make that into a bear that's gonna sit on someone's uh cabin step, and it's gonna look, say, welcome. So right now, we just have this stump right now, and we're gonna get the chainsaw in the, and the the um survey is the chainsaw. So we're gonna start carving it out. So it's gonna kind of look like something, and then the community input, the not face-to-face conversations with city members, uh, whether they're kids or adults. That's when we're gonna really find to chisel that into what it's going to be. So this is just a nice step. I don't know if that was appropriate. Mountain here. Yes, Chris.
Uh, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. Um, first off, I just want to thank you, Courtney, and your team, along with the Tasha and the Reynolds team. Um, it's been a very interesting journey. Um, as council member Odenoff knows, I'm not the most fluffy person. So this has been a a reach for me. With Shelley's help, and I really appreciate uh Brian stepping up and taking on the second grant and the mayor continuing this. Uh, we've received just over a hundred and seven thousand dollar, hundred, yeah, one hundred and seven thousand dollars over the last two years um from your foundation, which is huge for us, for our community. And this is an opportunity that we can take a project that is community-led and not pushed down from any part of the valley. Bellevue can take one hundred percent ownership of this, and it's just a great opportunity. So thank you for your support. Um, thank you for the funding and um, but the whole staff and everybody has been enjoyable to do this and seeing where we're at with it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Did I?
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Tammy Davis. I just was wondering, I know part of the Communities for Youth Initiative.
Yes.
And and so we're, we work with that. Is there any way, like, is, is there any way to kind of integrate some of that? So then we can also use some of that messaging and and really help strengthen the the whole idea behind this, because I know the correlation, you know.
Yes, and that is a fantastic idea. Um, and I, thank you for bringing that up. Um, which I, we fully support the communities for you and that work, and I do think that this is very much uh intersect with that. Um, I remember Megan Smith and her team are fantastic, and I, you know, whatever, whatever you see appropriate, we will share whatever information with them without. But I think that you're absolutely spot on. It's almost like, you know, the social determines health. It's almost like, you know, the social determines health. Anything else? Any questions?
I've got a question. Maybe you can't answer it, but I'm just curious. Um do we have one touch person um on staff or council that's going to be um making sure this keeps moving along or is that?
We have a team. Yeah, we have a team right now and on staff on the team is Shelley, Brian and Chris. Um and then I'm a team member.
Okay.
Yeah.
And your team has been phenomenal as well.
Will it also include any other community members if like community members wanted to be involved?
I think it's, I think the community member involvement is through the surveys, the inputs and things like that. Yeah.
Focus groups and little shred.
Yeah.
Christian's also.
I apologize. Yes, Christian, who is from Library and Community Services, manager, is there as well, is on the team as well.
Yeah. Well, I certainly appreciate your partnership in this. Um always open for feedback. Um but we we are excited to go on this journey. Again, it'll be the next four months with you all. Um and so I will be seeing you fewer times in February. Any others?
Thank you, Courtney. Thanks for making the trip and the presentation. At this time, we're going to move on to item seven B. This is our presentation and discussion regarding the City of Bellevue Water Project. Um I think that was a mistype about the wastewater plant updates. It's just supposed to be our City of Bellevue Water Project um status and updates. But um okay, I, we have a couple of, hi, I see, we have Christina um and Greg and Stuart um joining us from Merrick on Zoom. They're from American Company. Um in-house, we have our Public Works Director, Chris Johnson. Um and then we have our legal counsel, Rick Allington, as well as needed. So I uh would love to turn it over to the team from Merrick to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Greg Die. I am Merrick's Project Manager for the Design and Construction of the Upgrades to the Siemens Creek uh Springs Collection and Transmission System. With me is our Stuart Hurley and Christina Gillespie-Joggs. Stuart is the Principal in Charge for the project and Christina has been involved uh basically from the get-go. She has been instrumental in arranging the funding and uh guiding us through the um process of securing the grants and the loan. Um and so we are available to answer any questions that may come up uh towards the end of the presentation. Um tonight, we'll be presenting to you the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Compliance, the D E Q Communications that we've had with them, and then go over an updated timeline uh for the project. So if we we turn our attention to the um D E Q Compliance, the the focus of that is the amended compliance agreement schedule that is signed between the City of Bellevue and the basically the the state of Idaho. And there are a number of elements in that that I'd like to just give a status update on. Uh as part of the compliance agreement schedule, the city was to provide public notification that there are significant deficiencies and that they are noted in the annual consumer, excuse me, consumer confidence report until they are corrected. Uh city staff has been doing this. In fact, I see that they they've also posted it on the website, which is great. So they're they're ahead of the game on that. Uh the second element is the assessment source water monitoring. This is taking a look at the water quality. Uh city staff again has completed this and the findings have been that there's no bacteriological contamination, which is great news. Along those same lines, uh the city completed a microscopic particulate analysis. Um and this was used as a basis with D E Q um in making the determination that there's no groundwater under the direct influence of surface water, which is significant in that if you were fell within that um classification, uh we we'd have to upgrade the treatment to be able to utilize the springs. Two significant deficiencies remain. Uh the first one and and um probably the one that we've been working on most actively recently is the right to access. Um and basically, there is no land ownership or long-term agreement access currently in place that allows us to do um everything from engineering investigations and studies to uh construction of the upgrades on the property. Um and so that's that's being worked on. The other piece is the physical protection of the system. Uh and this again is a significant deficiency. And the the protection that needs to be provided is from backflow. So from flowing uh basically from a discharge back into the system. It's a type of cross connection that we want to avoid. And then also um just the contamination. Some of the facilities are are placed right at ground level and they're subject to flooding and um, you know, our bugs, insects, uh mice can get into the structures this way. If we elevate them, it avoids those problems. Moving on to our our communications with Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. Uh D E Q Regional Staff are, their funding staff, their compliance staff have all been kept abreast of the status of the project milestones completed to date. Um and and this is um, we've also informed them of the land access discussions between the city and the landowner and the future project schedule through regular telephone conversations, emails and just personal contact with these individuals. So we've been um very active in engaging D E Q in what is happening, what's going on and the the issues that we're encountering, the challenges uh along with uh the the schedule and where we're at in executing the um requirements for the amended compliance agreement schedule. I'm going to stop there. I'll I'll keep going, I guess. Let me keep going. Um one thing that that has come out of our recent work is that we now have an understanding uh because of the the city staff um undertakings and activities up in the collection system that the existing Siemens Creek Springs Collection System can deliver the full water right. And this was something that was always in question because of the flow meters on the system and whether they were calibrated or not. But recent activities have confirmed that um yeah, it appears that they're able to develop that or deliver that full water right. We will undertake monitoring of that to assure that, you know, the seasonal variation in flow or groundwater or spring water levels is taken into account and there's no significant deterioration from that number or impact to it. The implications of this are are significant. Uh it means that we do not need to expand the capacity of the existing system. And that was something that was presented in the facility plan as given the uncertainty, we we had planned on expanding the the uh the infrastructure just to be able to collect the water right. It now appears that we don't need to do that. Uh the other item is that the project is simplified to just upgrading the exists, existing collection system um and and to address the identified deficiencies. Uh so we we don't need to expand anything or enlarge anything. Uh it's just upgrading the existing system. Um and lastly, there's some of our preliminary engineering investigations and studies. We expect that the scope of those can be reduced um and will work with D E Q and the Army Corps of Engineers to confirm that. But we may be able to reduce our field work as a result of this determination. So that's, it's encouraging to see that we've we've not had to increase anything um in those regards. The the next steps are our work plan in in the near term. Given that uh the the collection system will not have to be expanded, we'll have uh communications with D E Q and discussions regarding the reduction in scope for the Cultural Resources Survey and the Army Corps of Engineer Consult- Consultation. They may not be required or they may be, since we're going in on disturbed property uh or disturbed ground, previously disturbed ground, we may not need the uh Cultural Resources Survey. Um we will conduct the land survey and this is, this is a key activity for both the landowner and the city. Um and our land survey, um we've made previous efforts to define and show where the um easements that are in the the agreements uh made with the la- landowner and previous landowners um where they lie with respect to the physical facilities. That's really fuzzy and we've not been able to nail that down with the information that we have. So a land surveyor will be used to uh basically nail down the the uh points of diversion. Um where they reside on the property will locate the existing facilities, the property lines and the easement lines uh that would will help uh discussions as to what needs to be done where and to what extent. This survey is is required to address both of these significant deficiencies. Um the the, you know, the land access and and the contamination. It's it's the next step. It's uh you know, we're we're at a standstill and not able to move on until we get that completed. Once we get it, we can rock and roll on it. Uh this, the city and the landowner attorneys are currently developing a memorandum of understanding that will allow American Company and our subconsultants permission to access the property to conduct our evaluations. Once we get that information, we will have what we're calling Water Team Stakeholder Meetings where representatives of the city, uh the landowner and Merrick get together and discuss the next steps, discuss any constraints or issues, uh get input from the landowner and from the city on the next steps. So that that will be a part of the the program going forward. And then we'll actually get out there and perform the next series of field investigations and studies. Um and we'll we'll gather that information and we'll again circle back with our our water team and present those findings to discuss with them further. On the long term, um a handout was included in your agenda package uh that outlines the phases of the project and the sequencing. And this is the the multicolored table. Um and the way that reads is basically top to bottom, left to right. And we walk through, we've identified five phases um and we walk through kind of these sub-activities within each of those phases. The first phase, the facility plan and funding, we're done with that. We've we've secured the funding um and we've completed the technically approved facility plan. The next phase is the field work and environmental report. And we show a series of sub-activities going across that. And right, and we've completed two A, the legal meeting number one, and two B, Water Team Workshop number one. And uh now we are on the eve of item two C, the Land Access M O U. Uh and you know, continue on, continuing on, going left to right, you can see the activities that we will be performing and where we will seek out input from both the city and the landowner and D E Q on developing the the project. Uh so we'll work through uh the field work and environmental stage, going to the preliminary engineering report stage. Um and then we get to the construction drawings and specifications. Uh and then finally into construction. So this is, this is our plan going forward and executing the project. One key element I I would like to point out is um the amended compliance agreement schedule requires the city complete construction by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. This plan respects that due date and right now we are on schedule to meet that due date. And it and it's basically a funding requirement that um they just want to keep us going and keep us on track. And so they put that in there for us to to adhere to. I I thank you for your time and um I'm I'm going to stop there and Stuart, Christina and I will will entertain any questions or comments.
Council, does anyone have any questions for Greg at this time? Um this is Councilmember Reed, Suzanne Reed, raising her hand.
Um so the note, I think uh one thing you stated was the copious documentation that we haven't been able to get. Um what are the timetables for the residents and for us to have that information, all of the um deadline discussions and the the narrative about why we haven't been able to come to an agreement with Idaho uh over a year after um that deadline was established?
I'm sorry, he didn't, can you reference your question?
So the the land access uh due date was March thirty first, twenty twenty four, right? And we all as residents received significant information about the importance of deadlines um from D E Q. And even before we voted, we had passed that important deadline. Now, we're over a year past the first step of this, which is land access. And I'm wondering how we're going to resolve that um and where the documentation about this failure to meet these deadlines in the D E Q documents, which are our A C A S, right? All those deadlines that we were told in Bellevue publications could result, missing those could result in civil penalties and things like that. So where is the, the A C A S requires documentation of why we're missing these deadlines and approval for for missing these compliance items. And since everything's kind of being put on the Idaho shoulders, I'm wondering why.
I'm gonna stop you right there. At what point?
Many questions.
Um at what point did Greg Die say that it was Idaho's responsibility? Why we missed our deadline? In his statement that he just made.
No, I'm saying land access. And Idaho is the
Okay, there was, there was no fault that has been put at all. Okay, there was, there was no fault that has been put at all on Idaho for this evening.
So what has been presented to DEQ as the issues with land access? What is the documentation? When can we get it?
Let me, I'm gonna back that up. Greg, one second, I want to back that up and just say, what is the requirement? Let's clarify this, what is the requirement with DEQ when we are missing a deadline in terms of? What is DEQ requiring in terms of documentation? Can you answer that question first if you, if yes, if you have time?
Certainly, yes, uh, we can. And they require notification, um, that we're not going to be able to meet the deadline. And so, and advanced notification. And so we have been communicating with the, the reviewer, uh, the folks from the funding um, division and also the compliance on what is happening. And that's through regular communications with them, talking with them, explaining the situation and saying, we are not going to meet the deadline. For instance, for the preliminary engineering report. And here's why we're working on it, we're actively engaged in it, we're, we're working to resolve it. And that has occurred numerous times, uh, including emails being sent to them saying, we're not going to make it. Here's the reason, do you have any questions? Do you have any concerns about it? We've received no pushback from DEQ. They have been empathetic and they have worked with us. What they are most concerned about is meeting the construction deadline. These intermediate deadlines are, they're goals, they're, you know, we, we shoot to, um, achieve them, but circumstances come up that are beyond the team's control that, uh, delay the project and they get that.
So for item 17, in any event occurs that causes or may cause delay in the achievement of any requirement of this ACAS, Bellevue must notify the department in writing within 10 calendar days of the date Bellevue knew or should have known of the delay. And there are, there's an A, B and C specifically, the burden of proving that any delay is caused by circumstances beyond the reasonable control of Bellevue rests wholly with Bellevue. So I'm asking for those submit submissions pertinent to the multiple deadlines and failures to comply with those deadlines. The documents, I, I'm really, does?
So you, I'm following you, I'm waiting for you to finish your sentence to respond. Are you done with your statement?
For the documents pertaining to, um, item 17, A, B and C.
So you are interested in receiving the documents of communication between Merrick and DEQ?
All public documents, but yeah, specific.
Have you asked your public works director or Merrick for those documents at this time?
Yes, I did.
When did you ask for those documents?
I sent in, when I wrote to DEQ, I sent to you and Chris.
So when you, when you submitted it to DEQ, you wrote?
And then I, you, I was told you had to have it, so it went to the both of you.
You wrote, let me just clarify, you wrote a internal document for yourself, which was an interpretation of the document from which you're reading upon.
Yes.
And did you directly ask, can I see this paperwork? Or did you send in a document?
All documentation pertaining to the statuses of the items that were deadlines that had been passed, yes.
Okay, all documentation that broad sweeping would be a public records request. And so the channel at which you submitted your information was not the appropriate for an all documentation request. Um, if you'd like to have that, correct me if I'm wrong, Professor Rick, but I think that would be appropriate for a public records request, um, moving forward, if that's something you'd like to see.
So the.
Well, I mean, I. Go ahead, but sorry.
If you can imply the documents used to provide notice about our not meeting our deadlines.
That individual document feels like that's a specific request.
Should be able to get located.
Yes, but I'm trying to intend that the sweeping all is a little bit nonspecific.
Okay, I think we will get to that, but I'm, I guess I'm wondering, where are the public records and why has DEQ not been able to provide them? Why have other requests? Why is the, why are the residents not seeing these documents as part of this project? The, we are a, a year behind. There was extensive reference to deadlines. There are commitments in what you should know about the Bellevue Water Bond that said, if you vote for this bond, we'll hit every deadline and we haven't. So I guess I'm wondering, where is a community, where is a, sorry, leadership? We're saying, we're going to explain to you what's going on, we're going to prove it. We're going to tell you exactly the narrative and we're going to understand why Idaho is at this point, uh, still waiting on, on performance that they have requested. I guess we're wondering, um, why we're over a year behind.
So we are here tonight addressing those questions and that is the intention of the, the development side. We have had, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, when does that?
Did you ask a question, are you getting answers at this time?
I have, we haven't heard.
So that, it has started. It started when Greg started his presentation. It started when you asked the question and we're answering you. So this is the moment and it is starting.
Okay.
Um, and your disapproval of the timeline is heard and understood. But we are here tonight having a project review. We are going over the new review that about Merrick has put together for us of the timeline. We are hearing from our team that DEQ is, it does not have issues with our communications. And so I, I think that let's keep going item through item, but you also have to hear what Merrick is saying to us.
I understand that, I would like to know what they've said to DEQ.
Okay.
And that I think is an important part of understanding why DEQ is, is not concerned. I think there are concerns that the city has represented that we are in fact in compliance. And my understanding is that it will create a second amended compliance agreement for Bellevue to be considered in compliance, that we cannot rely on this current document as an enforceable document because there are, um, there are.
That is your interpretation, that is not the directive that's been given it from DEQ. The DEQ has not given that internal directive at this time to Merrick, myself, the mayor of the city of Bellevue, our public works director or our legal counsel.
They wrote it in what they sent to you, but okay. It's in the email that was sent to you.
I, okay.
Okay.
Um, so back to you, Greg and the Merrick team. Um, per request of council member Reed, are you able to, uh, produce the written documents, uh, to DEQ for the reasons for missing, uh, some of the deadlines that have, were referenced?
Yes, we can and, uh, um, be happy to summarize them. Um, and it, again, the, the, and we've done this on other projects for other clients. Um, you know, if, if DEQ, uh, needed that information or felt it was a requirement or, um, you know, just were, were really going to take us to task on meeting these in, in intermediate deadlines, they would have asked us. I mean, we have that kind of relationship with them that, uh, okay, Greg, I hear what you're saying. You've told me you're not going to meet, uh, meet the deadline, you know? Submit a, a letter to me explaining why it is and, uh, you know, we'll look at amending the amended compliance agreement schedule. We've heard none of that in going forward in all our discussions. And, and that's not just myself, there's other members of the team that have engaged with DEQ at different levels, different departments. And they are informed. We got the funding group informed, we got compliance group informed and our design review group informed. Um, and we have sent emails and, you know, we'll, we'll provide you with what we have there. So yes, we have documentation.
Do we have another, another question from counsel? Tammy?
Uh, does this affect in just the, the time, change of timing? How does it affect our, uh, loan or does it affect the loan if we're not? I mean, would, does that not come into play unless the construction got put off? You know, because then we need some of the funds or how are we using the funds? The acquisition of all the funds and being able to dispense them accordingly for the project, the whole. How does, how does the timing affect the loan and or the grant?
Great.
I'll go ahead and, uh.
Yeah. Christina, address that please.
Yeah.
Sorry, um, mayor, is it okay if I address?
Yeah, please do, I was gonna ask you too.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, great question. Um, as Greg stated in his presentation and just restated, we have, our team has been in consistent communication with the Department of Environmental Quality. This includes their grants and loans bureau chief, Mary Ann Peavy, and the rest of the staff. They understand that, um, we are currently working through or the city's attorney and, uh, Eden Ho's attorney are working through, um, producing a memorandum of understanding which will allow access and allow movement forward on this project. And so, um, the, as Greg also stated, in our vast experience of working with the Department of Environmental Quality, um, these things do happen, delays do happen here in the state of Idaho. And those are due to a number of reasons. Um, and so they are very well informed. We, I have very regular communications, uh, with their grants and loans team. Um, we will amend any sort of funding agreement if needed, but at this time, we still believe that we can, um, finish the project, uh, within the stated timelines that are held in the amended compliance agreement as well as the loan and grant agreements. And I just also want to say that, um, there was a, um, uh, a, a pretty large conference here in the state of Idaho, just a couple of weeks ago. Your public works director attended that. The Idaho, uh, Rule Water Association Annual Conference here in Boise, Idaho. And at that, uh, particular meeting, I did have an opportunity to speak with Cassandra Lemmons, who is the compliance chief, who is overseeing this project. And she stated to me that her team and every other team member with the grants and loans bureau, uh, with the engineering departments at DEQ, they're all very much in alignment and understand what's going on with the project. And she stated that she and or representative of the state of Idaho is more than happy to come to one of these median, meetings either virtually or in person to address the concerns, um, that other council, uh, members have proposed tonight. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Thank you, Christina. Suzanne Reed?
Uh, Christina, can you clarify for me, when you mention amendments? What is the process for the amendments that you referenced?
Um, it's, uh, it's an email to DEQ, uh, stating, um, you know, here, here is the proposed, uh, process that we'd like, that we'd like to go through. We need to extend the timeline on the loan or the grant agreement. Um, they then call a meeting, um, which is typically virtual. Um, we then explain, uh, what, uh, the situation is and substantiate that with, uh, the records that we've been, you know, submitting, just as Greg stated. Um, so that's with the regional and the compliance folks as well as the funding folks. And, um, what they do is then they put together, it's typically a one-page amendment. Um, because an amendment is typically, you either need to modify, um, the, the terms of the particular loan, maybe you're getting additional funding. Maybe the timeframe needs to be extended, uh, from five years to six years to spend those funds. Um, the, then one-page or two-page amendment then gets sent to the city for council's, uh, review and mayor's approval, uh, that gets sent back to DEQ. And, um, the, um, the leadership at DEQ also executes that. And it becomes part of the funding agreement record. It's a fairly simple process.
But currently there is no amendment needed based on this deadlines, is that right?
No, that's correct, there is no amendment needed at this time.
Okay, and is that accurate? Um.
She doesn't, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what's the question? Go ahead.
Well, she was confirming that there's no ACAS, a new amendment needed due to the missed deadlines thus far.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I just would wanted to confirm with Rick that the process of the amendment requires council approval for any.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I thought the question was an amendment to the funding agreement, not the compliance agreement.
I guess the ACAS or the, the funding agreement.
Christina, speaking, um, strictly to the funding, because that was the question that was posed via Tammy Davis.
Okay.
Do you have a separate question?
I have, okay, so a funding question. Um, if we find and, and, uh, that we have been unable to reach an agreement with Idaho, have there been discussions about a taking? And or is everyone in the council where that a taking would nullify reimbursement to, uh, Bellevue for the funds needed for Idaho?
Or any.
Eminent domain, right? The fifth amendment taking, you take the, for, uh, pro, for compensation.
You're proposing something that is not even a topic of discussion at this time.
It's a, it's in the loan document that if they, if the, if the property owner does not agree to the sale, they can be properly, they could, they must be fully compensated, but we will not be reimbursed from the loan.
Okay.
That is close to a million.
If we have a major fire and wipe out the whole town, those things, a lot of it could happen.
So I.
Well, I think there was, there were some, there were some assumptions when this thing began that we didn't have easements out there and we learned later on that we do. And so we don't need to exercise our right of eminent domain.
So land access is no longer an issue?
No, well, land act, it's still, our springs and Idaho Ranch Springs are in pretty close proximity. It's still on private property and it's, we just have an easement out there. And so we've had to be sensitive to the landowners' desire to be informed about what's going on and to make sure that we don't injure his water right and throughout this process. And so that's taken some time. We also ran out of season because we couldn't get the survey done before the snow fell last year. So we've been waiting all winter for the snow to melt out there. And so now we're ready to start the, um, land surveys.
So there will be no land purchase?
No.
Okay, so LE1 is out, so that million dollars is, well, nine hundred something.
Yeah, we don't.
Money back.
Right.
Okay.
But, um, okay, we'll leave it there.
Okay.
That's, that's the way it exists right now. I, I, I don't see us needing to ask to purchase any land or acquire any land through eminent domain. So we've got, we have an agreement out there, we have water rights out there. It's just been, it's just taken a little time to work with the landline on it and, uh, get everybody together on the same page.
Okay, so is that accurate, Merrick, that LE1 is, is done other than maybe that, that $50,000 survey plan out there? That's the, that component of the project?
None of it's done right now.
Well, this has been, but that LE1 is all about land acquisition.
I know, they're still trying to finish that. Why, why could you ask that they think that if the negotiation is over when it is not over? So they cannot answer that at this time.
It's strictly about land access. And I thought Rick just said there will be no, there is no land access, or I'm sorry, acquisition. There's no land acquisition.
So what is your point?
I'm asking for, for meaningful updates about what we're discussing. And, uh, not, not, we, we're over a year behind. The residents have no information and.
Well, this is, you know, my understanding is that this meeting is to bring everybody up to date.
Right.
I think we've demonstrated that there is reasonable cause or good cause for why we're behind.
I, no, we haven't, I don't think we have.
To your, to your standard, but to DEQs, to the cities, to how we run jobs like this, this is not uncommon. And, and if DEQ and, and the agencies that oversee this say we're, what we're doing is acceptable, because if they didn't, that, we would be first to know. We would be getting phone calls, we would be in meetings, there would be, we would be paying fines, we would be fined. And make no mistake about that.
And so who has been, and I guess the question is, since nobody seems to be aware of the information that's been submitted, I think is it, it is appropriate to make sure we are fully aware of what the narrative is about this one-year delay.
Who's nobody?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I have no idea, I've never seen, I've not been able to find anything about. Uh, over a year ago, actually on April 1st, because. Uh, over a year ago, actually on April first, because we had, we voted to, we all asked the residents to vote. When we were already missed the deadline for land access per the ACAS.
Can I just stop you there? Other than lack of information, has anything about this project been damaging to you or the citizens at this time?
Yes, because I think.
How, can you please explain that?
How, how has it been? Because we are, we are, I'm, okay, so you, so long as we're all in agreement. That no action by this council and mayor means this project can be completed on schedule. Then that's fine. My belief, based on what the DEQ submitted, my concerns about the way Idaho has been treated. Um, is indicative of the way we've treated the rest of the residents. And uh, I have concerns that we will not do this on time, that we are not, that. Uh, that we are not currently in compliance and that there is going to be a need for an amended.
We do know these projects, it takes time, and every project out there, it could, it connected to water.
We haven't even gotten to the water yet, Sean, we're still trying to get on the land. Why is that? Let's have a detailed examination of the, the things that you don't know.
Let people do their job.
Do it then, where is it?
I wanna do that, we're doing it now.
Yeah, I'm gonna put a pause, I'm just gonna put a pause on this really quick. So it sounds like, from what you're saying. The lack of information is the damage that you. Cause I'm, I'm not seeing a damage to citizens other than lack of information, which I, as the mayor, will take accountability for. And which I am starting right now, in this moment, at this meeting, asking Merrick and our representatives to get the committee up to speed. We have had transitions in leadership, we've had hirings, and I am not someone to make excuses. So. We are here, we're having a project update. We, Suzanne, you have been part of this, of the building of the new website. In an effort to start to get information, more information to our citizens. We have put in a newsletter to get more information to our citizens. Within the website, there is a transparency center. Tab that we are working to build out that will have tracking data on the water project. Things are taking time, we are getting there. This meeting today, Greg has gone through. An update, and for you to again say that we are not in compliance after you have been told. By Greg Die from Merrick, we are in compliance, and DEQ has confirmed we are in compliance. I fear that you are not hearing from the experts, you are not hearing and trusting your leadership. And you are creating a, a narrative of your own, and so I think it's really important to ask very specific questions. Listen to the answers you're being given, and if you need a follow-up for more information, let us know and identify and we can seek it. But I don't feel that you are listening and hearing what is being said by our engineers. By our experts and by DEQ.
Okay, I apologize, and I just wanted to have this on record from the mayor and the council. And Merrick, that as of now, there is no need for an amended ACAS.
Correct.
Okay.
Merrick, will you confirm that as well, that as of now, there is no need for an amended ACS?
Mayor and council, there is no need for an amended ACS.
Thank you. And I just would, I guess I would say, can we just have an explanation of the delay specific? Descriptive for people to understand over the course of a year, what, what the delay has been to get the survey.
Go away.
So, so can I clip, ask you to clarify your question? You are asking for a, uh, just a clear description of the delay.
Uh, about, about um, being able to access uh, the Idaho property. Because, right, that was.
I would say that the delay that we found as we. The scope of the project was a lot different at the beginning, and that caused some concerns with the landowner. And I think as we've gone through the process, we've narrowed the scope down, I believe. And I think he's, he's feeling more comfortable with what state proposed. And uh, it's a back and forth, and it just takes time. Just, this doesn't happen in one week, and so, and like I said, we had, we had to wait for the winter. In October, it didn't happen, so we had to wait. Um, that's really, that's a.
So that's.
Find a game, and it's about maybe building a little bit of trust between the landowner and the city, um, and that took a little time.
So that's an, uh, um, from our council, Rick Hamilton, our Public Works Director, Chris Johnson would like to answer that question as well.
So this project started. Back in September of twenty twenty-two, where we did our engineering um, assessments. We had five or six engineering firms put in applications and bids for this project. We selected Merrick, and they were the top one through. The mayor at the time, myself, uh, water operator. Um, maybe two other people that were on that board that evaluated the applications on the bids. Then we went to the bonding process and going through the bonding attorney and Christina, her part helped find the funding. The left the bond approved. What have you been missing that entire time? A public works director, someone to manage the project, to be an in-between, between Merrick and the landowner. So since January, when I came on. I, we had some delays in communication with Merrick and the city. Um, there was meetings that were set up that people couldn't commit to, trying to meet the landowner, the city, and Merrick all in one field. We finally started getting communication going again. Um, and since then, I've been reaching out to the landowner every two weeks. Visiting with him, giving him updates on our flow data, um, whatever he's asked, I've been working with him. So now we have that, that final piece and me and Merrick are in communication, DEQ and Merrick and myself are in communication. We're still working through operators that are ultimately uh, charged with. Um, the compliance of our system, and they're still contracted, working to get those tests, so we take full ownership of that. So. It's a series of steps, like Sean was saying, it does not happen overnight, it's not one person that dropped the ball, it's been. The change of leadership that we've had, change of responsibilities. Getting back to the foundations of what is most important about this project, and there are ideas that Rick brought in. Um, you know, we wanted to, we brought in our water attorney, Chris Bromley. And we identified, oh, we do have easement access, we do have this, we do have that, and then coming up with a joint agreement with. The landowner, the landowner's lawyer, and just getting on a simple page saying. We don't need to see all of your property, we don't wanna be involved with all of your property, we just wanted to access our easement, not interfere with our water right. Get this done and provide good quality water to the city. So it has taken a while, and winter has been an issue. We can't do anything until the snow came off, now the snow's come off. We'll have the MOU here next week and we'll be surveying here in the next two weeks. We still meet the timeline, if we can stick to this, as right now, unless there's supply issues. I don't see anything that's getting a further delay this project, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I would like to uh, uh, have Idaho's attorney respond as well, if you don't. Jim Lasky?
Yeah, thank you, Jim Lasky, on behalf of Idaho. I would just sort of say. We have worked through a lot of stuff in the last six months in terms of the scope of what the survey was. We were a little scared about what the scope of the proposed survey was. And we've had meetings, we've worked through that, as they reported today. In going through that and retaining Chris Bromley and looking at various different things and getting better measurements. It's been determined that the scope of this whole project is a, is gonna be a lot smaller. Which I think benefits everybody, but the last six months of us being in roundtables and. Frankly, arguing over the scope of what you guys were looking to do, probably has helped everybody by. Sort of focusing that scope, and that is really the cause of the delays in getting this MOU. Which Rick and Chris Bromley and I are working on right now.
Thank you.
Um, maybe two things, one kind of, give me a comment, and then a question possibly for the engineers. Um, but as to the schedule, I, I've not really heard anything tonight that makes me. Hmm, gives me a lot of heartburn, I guess, about where we are and whether we can complete construction by twelve of next year. Um, twelve twenty-six, is that correct? That was the, that's the deadline, is December thirty-first or twenty-six. And while there may be issues, um, I don't really hear anything that gives me heartburn about. Staying with that schedule, I guess, first of all. And secondly, and, and maybe this is also a consideration, is you had talked about not being, not needing to uh, expand the capacity. The full water right can be delivered, um, and could you maybe clarify that a little bit? Cause that seems to me that if you, if you don't need to do that, that for one can shorten the construction demands and needs. And make the schedule even more realistic to accomplish. John, you understand that question?
Yes, sir, great question, thank you. Um, so there's some. Items in the um, amended compliance agreement schedule that require us to fix. Significant deficiencies within the collection system. And those deficiencies are related to, uh, there's um. Observation ports that uh, are, we can't have. Uh, there's uh, tops of some of the collection structures are at grade. And are subject to flooding and contamination from, uh, you know, wildlife or whatever. We still have to fix those items. It's a, it's an upgrade or a rehabilitation project as opposed to an expansion project. We gotta go in and make the repairs to address the significant deficiencies. Does that answer your question?
I, I would assume that as a result of kind of knowing that or learning that information, and, and maybe the scope of the whole thing has been. Uh, reduced as a result of what you've learned, that that might enable you to even more likely enable you to meet a construction deadline.
Absolutely, yeah. See, it's greatly simplified and um, we don't have to do as much work.
You have a question, Ben?
Not at this time.
At this time, I'd like.
Sorry, when will we see the revised project plan, like, uh, is in the technical draft?
There were, so.
I mean, there's been significant changes.
Greg, will you um, respond to that if you're the appropriate one? Um, will we see a revised plan, and if so, where um, in the timeline that you've uh, kind of broken up for us on this page? Would we see that?
So the, the project milestones table that um. We prepared and submitted, we show item two C as taking place. And if you notice up in the header for that, we're stating that it's going to occur in quarter two. Twenty twenty-five and quarter three of twenty twenty-five. That's about as definitive as we can get at this point in time. Um, and, and, and again, a lot of it hinges on this land survey, which is the next step. Um, so once we get the MOU, we'll immediately schedule the land survey. That'll take us, oh, probably six to eight weeks before we get documentation back. And then that will be the start of um, some of these other studies and other. Uh, investigations that we need to conduct. So that's, that's about as definitive as we can get. Uh, we're looking at moving into preliminary engineering report stage, and this schedule is valid today. Uh, so it's Q three twenty twenty-five through Q four of twenty twenty-five. Um, and then into drawings and specs uh, throughout next winter. Um, and then construction next summer, which is uh, the ideal time to be doing this work is. In the, in the summer.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I want to open it up for uh, any public comments or public questions. So that would be from people in the audience and or people on Zoom, please raise your hand and I will call on you. And those in the audience and on Zoom, please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm sorry, this is an ill-informed question, but it's been quite some time since I remember reporting on. The needs for this project. The rehabilitation of the spring, uh, at one point required actually moving the entire source. To the other side of the road line. Is that still on the tier?
No.
Has that changed? So dramatically since my last recollections?
The, the project is to make it fair that we were collecting our three CFS. And I think our measurements at the tank indicate that we are getting three CFS. Um, and so there isn't a, a need to remove the uh. Um, collection site or the.
So the expansion would have required the relocation of it?
If, well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think if, if we had to get our full three. If we were only getting two CFS, and we, we might have needed to do something else, but that's not the case, too, so.
Ms. Mayor, can I follow up with perhaps Chris?
I, I was just gonna ask if Chris wanted to respond.
So part of the ACS, there is a line item in there that says that. The collection system needs to be a hundred feet off of the roadway or, or. Muldoon Canyon Road. And so that was part of the movement, and there was also at one time, an agreement with the landowner that the main pipeline. Would be moved off of the property, and I'm not sure if that is what ever came with that. Um, again, we're still in the design phase, whether it's gonna go down the county or we're staying in the original um, pipeline. I believe we're moving it off to the county, and that's what you're referencing. It's not the collection site, but it's the. Main transmission line from going down the middle of Idaho to follow the county road.
Okay, I don't wanna do Q and A, cause I know that's not the right spot, but I'd like to follow up with you tomorrow.
Um, actually, I believe she.
I, I would, I'm open to your questions at this time, I think.
At this time?
Yeah, I think it's important to get some questions answered.
So, um, my, my recollection, and I think the last time I reported on this, it was quite a big number to move that line. Off of the Idaho Ranch and onto another transmission line, an entirely new transmission line. On county land.
No, we've always, the intent was to change out the transmission line, cause it's an old uh, concrete, especially this concrete pipe, but.
Relocating, relocating it, is that still what's gonna take place?
Yes, sir, cause we, that's what the agreement has been, and it only adds about a half mile, maybe. Um, three quarters of mile additional pipe, just to the topography of the road versus just shooting it straight down to that.
So the source won't be relocated, the transmission line will be relocated. So it'll be a drop in the line and it'll come down off of the private land.
Yes, right.
The, another question that just came up, thank you, is a, um, the, the need to access easements. I think there was a, a large figure, a large piece of the funding for the bond was to actually acquire. Easements or property, hearing tonight that that's no longer. And perhaps that is saving to a million dollars perhaps. Ian, that was, that was earmarked or anticipated for such things, is that, am I getting that correct?
So when we put the bond together and we put together the funding package, we anticipated, what is our highest cost? We put in some extra, cause it's easier to return money than it is to go back and ask for additional funds. So we did um. Inflate the overall price, knowing that there could be some cost changes or construction costs increases. Gas, fuel prices increase, and when fuel prices increase, pipe prices increase. We, we, we put this into the scenario, knowing that we wanted to ask for more money and not use it versus. Going on our knees and begging for more at the end. So as we've seen, the scope has changed, that's gonna reduce the price. Um, yeah, there's, there's things that are gonna reduce price, having the easements. And we knew we had the um, water rights, but we did not know the full understanding and how. Um, this is why we bring in a water attorney who specializes in this, and he says, okay. Everything is written out in eighteen forty-two um, surveying tables. And so trying to get those adjusted so where we can actually identify their monuments, so we can lay out the easements. And identify exactly where our structures are. where the pipeline is and make everything move. It's just been a process. And so we've, we've slowly picked up on this. We've gotten the right consultation in, we've gotten the right lawyers in, and communication with landowners been improved, so we can move forward.
So at this time-
A quick question would be, were to report on numbers because we well know what the bond was and the anticipated cost. So would those new numbers arrive after engineering survey? At certain point, I would guess sometime in the winter, we might have a sense of how much this thing's really going to come.
Let me pass that back to Eric. This would be a question for Greg, Christine and Stuart. Where on, on our project milestones timeline would we potentially see a kind of reproduction of what the costs are for the project moving forward?
Mayor and council, that's, that's a good question. And that will be included in the preliminary engineering report. And so we'll update our cost, the construction cost estimate. That's a requirement of these reports that are submitted to DEQ and to yourselves. And so that will be an update that we can use as a gauge going forward.
And to drill down on the timing on, on the list right now, it's, that's slated Q3 2025 to Q4 2025, somewhere in there.
Yes.
Yeah, so towards the end of the year.
And somewhere there's going to be, it's going to be put out for bids. And so we'll know exactly what it's going to cost.
Preliminary engineering.
Yeah.
You'll get DEQ feedback, we'll get landowner feedback, we'll do public comment on preliminary engineering. And then we'll go into RFPs.
Good, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any question, any other questions inside City Hall? Any questions on Zoom? I want to put it back to council if there's any other questions for our engineers or our staff on this update.
That's good.
Okay. The, just for the community to know, this document of project milestones that Merrick has submitted is available for you to download via our city council meeting packet. And I will also work with our community services manager to make sure that it is available for public view on our website. And if, if the community has any other questions about the water project, please utilize the website to reach out and ask questions and/or contact myself, the mayor, or the community development director. It does look like I had, I have a hand in, in City Hall, or sorry, Public Works Director. I apologize. Do not reach out to Brian, reach out to Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. My apologies. Okay, we had a hand, please state your name and your address for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Bernard Morowitz, you know, Ranch. I, I did have one question, and that was if the transmission source or the spring sources don't have to be moved. It looked to me from the DEQ stuff that there weren't any studies that were needed, like, what do you call them, hydro, hydrogeologic or hydro, those types of studies aren't necessary if it's not being moved. Is that correct? Or, or I guess I'm curious, if, if the spring collection areas don't need to be moved, what studies are required in that case?
Greg, did you hear that question?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. So the hydrogeologic investigation that Mr. Morowitz is referring to initially had, I think about eight borings, three of which were monitoring wells and five were to obtain information on the soils beneath the ground surface. With the determination of that the existing system can deliver three CFS, we don't need to expand it. And so we don't need the borings to obtain the subsurface soil conditions. We do recommend the monitoring wells just to assess the long-term or seasonal variation, I should say, not necessarily long-term, but the seasonal variation in surface water, spring levels. And those monitoring wells will be installed near the existing facilities.
Did that answer your question?
Just to clarify, near, does that mean, so within, assuming within the existing easements that you have, is that, is that fair to say?
I would say with that-
You know, everybody's asking me to commit to existing easements when we've not been able to determine them or outline them or anything at this point. And, you know, whether we need additional land or not, the, the land survey will tell us all of that. And of course, we will put the monitoring wells in the existing easements if we can. But we may find that some of the existing infrastructure is outside of the formal easements that have been developed as part of the agreements, past agreements. And so until we see what those easements look like with respect to the existing facilities, that's, it's hard to make a commitment on that. But, you know, like I said, if, if the existing facilities are within the easement, yes, of course, we'll put the wells within the existing easement.
Thank you. That's a fair answer.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, before we wrap this up, I do just want to, I want to, Suzanne, I would like to, I would like to acknowledge some of your personal writings that you published in your Bellevue Matters newsletter that you have sent out to the public. And I, I want to make sure that it is very aware to this council, the staff and the community that those are your writings, your interpretation of the fact and your information that you are creating and spreading out there. I think that our engineers have gone above and beyond generally within their work for the city, their communications with DEQ. And tonight establishing for the community, the compliance that Bellevue is, is in with DEQ. I feel that in your communications, you took the opportunity to be quite disrespectful to our staff, our Public Works Director, questioning the integrity of how Merrick's contract even came to be without understanding the history of it. Accusing the city of having disdain for our citizens and accusing the city of potential misspeak about the landowner. While those are your opinions that you hold for yourself, I would ask, moving forward, that you please ask direct questions to representatives that we are working with, to our staff, before you write information out there that oftentimes is incorrect. And I think that it's very damaging to, to our staff. It's very damaging to the representation of our staff to the community. And while I know you believe you represent a section of residents, please know that everyone here on council represents the residents. Everyone working within the city represents the residents. I, as the mayor, represent the residents. And so you are entitled to your opinion. But please, moving forward, have a little more respect for our contractors. Have a little more respect for our staff. Have a little more respect for your fellow council people in the way in which you're communicating in your dialogue. That's all I would ask of you. And I hope that this evening, you have taken the opportunity to hear the truth and get your questions answered. And if you have not been satisfied with your answers tonight, please ask direct questions, you know, as appropriate moving forward.
Well, I would love to respond to what you've stated. And I'd like to know what I wrote that is not accurate. Has the project been managed to plan? Yes or no?
I think that right now, getting in the semantics with you or all your verbiage-
Excuse me.
I didn't, I-
Well, I shouldn't say to you, you suggested that I've said things. Some project deadlines are over one year old.
It is not so, so let me, let's-
Right, I mean-
So I, your, your way in which that you have spoken about our staff and how you have spoken about our contractors is not the view of the city of Bellevue. It's not the view of the city of Bellevue. And I'm just clarifying that your opinions are your own. But I would ask that, moving forward, you show a little more respect to the city at which you are sitting, at a council chambers representing as well.
And I understand that. And I would also suggest that maybe when we speak transparency, that's what we get. Because again, we have, we asked residents to sign on to a bond on May 31st, when we already had a deadline that had passed in the ACAS. We have not shared any information, including these revelations we're learning tonight, that maybe the costs are going to come down. There has not been a great deal of information shared. I would suggest to you that the only thing that the residents have in this project is the ACAS. And therefore, we ask for it to be complied with. Because otherwise, the, the people who are paying for this, the people who will see these increases on their bills, they are unrepresented.
They are represented and the information-
Uninformed, excuse me, they're not being properly informed.
And there is room for growth, for information. I have identified that tonight. I have identified the ways in which the information will be delivered to the citizens. The, Merrick has identified the ways in which there have been delays. The way you're accusing is, is as if this was with malicious intent and hidden for a long duration of time, as has been explained to you this evening by Merrick, by our Public Works Director and by our lawyer. In the last four to six months, all of these things that are being communicated to you right now have come to light. And with the sensitivity of some of the information and the negotiations that have been happening with lawyers, it has not been appropriate to be communicating about it yet. We are communicating about it now. I appreciate you coming to the table with direct questions to ask. I hope your answers have, you have received those answers. And please give the city staff, myself, the council and our engineers the opportunity to continue to get the information to the public. Coming from us, coming from the information that we can now reveal. I think that this was a great starting point of discussing the project. And all I'm asking is just for a little bit more respect on the people that are working on this project.
Certainly do my best. I was curious how this meeting came about.
How this meeting came about?
Yes, was it in response to any particular thing that had happened?
Greg, Di and I had had a conversation. There was discussion back and forth about the compliance, the ACAS. And I, I had asked him if, if they had time to, to give an update. I feel like there was a water team meeting that had happened. That was our first one that, that was on the schedule. There was a lawyer discussion, so it was kind of, it, it was about time.
Nothing to do with my inquiry to DEQ.
It, it wasn't in response to your inquiry for DEQ, but your inquiry to DEQ did help us frame some of the information we brought to this presentation today to make sure that we didn't leave a lot of questions on the table.
Okay, well, I certainly take your point. I would ask that, that you live up to this commitment, that all of the public documents, as you've stated, become available and that there is a comprehensive hub about projects like this. And I think we've spoken about this in previously. But what is not, you know, I, I mean, we've all worked in Fortune 500 companies and, and this, these are-
Your disrespect of the production of their document, I don't think is appropriate. I think that they produced a very legible, understandable document that is easy to read for our council and for our community. And, and whatever you feel the standard should be is that, is your personal. I think this is a great document. I, I don't think it's appropriate to disrespect our engineers on the, on the document that they produce that is incredibly legible and, and clearly understandable for us and the rest of the community.
Well, I'll leave it at that.
And I would ask you, as a commitment that you have already said as, you know, being part of governance, is, is working with us to continue to be part of the solution. And you have done a great, a great service to the city in being part of developing a new website where the staff can contribute documents for us to continue to fill out that transparency center. So while I appreciate everything you've done, I'm asking for a continued commitment from you to be part of the solution, because you are sitting on a council. And that's, you know, what, in a way, what you have committed to be, to, to do, to represent the citizens and also be part of the solution.
I understand, and I've been told that I cannot contact DEQ. I send emails to fellow county people.
I think you're missing, you're misunderstanding.
You just need to stop this.
Yeah, stop, yeah. So-
The discussion.
Yeah.
I would think I'm trying to clarify what I mean now.
But just being respectful.
Suzanne, it's, it's a broken record. I feel like we're beating a dead horse here. Everybody is responding to your questions. The documents have been provided, the updates haven't been provided. Public records requests can be made. How much staff time do you want to take? And can we charge you by the hour then for that, to go through all those documents?
Well, I agree with the thought. That's so- Center for the community.
It'd be nice to just let it stop.
Okay. I just wanted to-
But thank you for that. I appreciate you voicing that.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other public comments or questions at this time, I'm going to thank Merrick for their time.
Thank you.
And your presentation. And we look forward to, you know, continuing work on this project and further updates that you'll bring to council in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Can we take five minutes?
Oh, no, I was just going to say, at this time, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. And then we will move on to the old business section of the agenda.
I need you to go have a cigarette.
Say it again. Um, for a drink. I will- I will.
Uh make you all read and understand it. Uh and then, you know, for tonight, um I'm gonna ask them again. Probably turn in your uh form when you are done here, but uh just for the sake of getting around to going. Even very high level, uh how are we doing with the kind of plan? What do you guys, what are your impressions of it?
I think it's the best.
I mean, general overview. And because I've read it several times, but going through every individual thing, I realize. Well, one is the question, you know, do we pay for, you know, we're just. Like thinking about a whole new comprehensive plan, I don't think that's needed because I think there are so many things still. In here that are very applicable that have never been done.
And we haven't gotten to yet.
Gotten to.
And some of the uh duty work for history and some of that was done in two thousand, two thousand seventeen. So about the. Now it's all moose stuff per se.
Right, and and the general like consensus I found was just like the timeline and. How we track it so we stay on task for what needs to be. Done within those items. The one concern I do have is like they'll be being a working. Class. You know, neighborhood community is, you know, uh figuring out how we have these neighborhoods. Spirits to leave this and it's pretty difficult when. People work a lot during here, yeah.
They did, you know, we've actually had.
Really tough. I think uh an upcoming census. It's gonna be tough. Because if you know the Hispanics don't answer the door. Do stuff, you know, it is a happy last time. You know, I can't wipe his oilies. That number of people, I mean, I said they live here. Not true, a lot of people live here.
No, some of the feedback that I've received is whenever somebody who's not Hispanic that comes to their door, there's not usually. Nice things that happen to them, so.
Uh it could be about everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we have some good community leaders that are willing to and have been participating. In the hole. That are Hispanic that can also help and that'll be part of. You know, like through the Hunger Coalition who is a a community partner and, you know, employing other. Other people than just ourselves, uh like the public private partnerships with nonprofits and other organizations that can help us. Bring to bear some of the messaging and and make sure that it is reflective. And then the only other thing that I I like is just a little more um. In the. Like from the general consensus, trying to give some. Those goals, objectives and. Some additional ways to achieve it that we might give for the things that we we maybe haven't achieved. Some additional ways or.
Implementation.
Yeah, implementation has so those things are really helpful to getting something done, you know. Some things obviously have. Come to fruition, but uh other things can. It's easier if it's drawn, it's that, you know, to done a little more of a step process, so.
And I I. I I think it was important um when when we launched the last project to involve the community. And, you know, that's precisely, you know, what happened is we started with almost thirty people. And we broke out into different chapters, you know, somebody. You know, took on housing and somebody, you know, one group took on. Um natural resources or recreation and and so, you know, we. You know, we engage the people in the community that were interested in those topics. And they kind of wrote their own section and and we, you know, we presented it back and forth to each other and so it was a really. Um nice collaborative effort.
Really well.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, I I've offered to Brian, you know, that. You know, I I would be happy to par- participate. You know, in this in this next version of it, whatever it it looks like. Um but uh, you know, it, I mean, it's it's a good process and it's definitely timely. Um and it does take time. Takes it takes a lot of time.
Yeah, so just next steps on this, um the next council meeting, I'm planning on having a resolution for you guys establishing an advisory committee for an update to the com plan. Uh then I will have a initial kickoff meeting with them. Uh then we'll kind of go through the opening project management documents and create the the game plan for how we update the com plan. I don't know if you'd like to back you guys like. Um so if you guys have steering committee or advisory committee members that you'd like or members of the committee like see all that, please, please send them my way.
What are the time commitments?
I haven't quite that long, but what I've been talking to some folks about is probably. Meeting once every couple of months with a two hour.
We uh we we didn't, but probably once a week. It's absurd, you know. And if not, every two weeks. And it was uh we were really good. Advisory panel that was into it, you know, and I think we find some people who are into it nowadays and uh as well.
If they want to be, meet with me weekly, I.
No. That's the thing though, cause if they. If they're given action steps and action items and things to do, then they can do it and meet as their. As the group, right? And then then a a particular person, the leader or liaison of that area.
To clarify, Brian, um with with the fact that there uh is outstanding deliverables from the com plan. Um is it your intention that, just to clarify that. It'll be an amendment to the current com plan versus a full rewrite of the com plan? What 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 are the thoughts?
Kind of halfway between the two, like I think the the look and the structure and how it functions and how you guys use it is going to be substantially different from. What currently exists. I think a lot of the. Work that is currently in the com plan that. Is still valid and still needs to be implemented will get wrapped into.
Um and just for clarification with process, what does council involvement and input look like for?
So I think a comprehensive planning process is a really good opportunity for direct democracy with the citizens. And you guys, as elected representatives, tend to screw that up. But I don't really want you guys on the steering committee necessarily, uh but there's gonna be a lot of check ins and that's gonna be kind of some of the project management that is going to be. At this point, here's what we deliver to council as a, how are we doing? And then as we get to the end, the adoption sets.
And then what are you, what are we or you doing making sure it's a diverse group of people? On the advisory committee.
We can send or recommend, yeah, yeah.
I think that's gonna be the best.
I am so glad, cause I was like, I hope I'm not the only person not gonna sign up for that.
Revising a comprehensive plan is a significant deal, um and my sense actually is that. We should look to update this comprehensive plan and not redo it or revise it. Now, maybe there's more input that's gone into this process than I'm aware, but that's at least my initial. Kind of reaction to it is it can be. You know, it can consume a lot of employee time and staff time and it can consume. Time and whether that is currently a priority of the city to devote that time and attention to. Is a question, I guess, um maybe others will answer that and that's why we're going down this path, but uh and and then. Um by way of, well, I I think of as updating the document rather than and. Creating a new document. I I focused on action items and think, okay, what should these action items have been completed with? These action items still need attention. Which of these have just kind of gone away for whatever reason? And maybe there's some prioritization given to those action items and say, you know, this is remains a high priority um. Of the citizens and then of this council or however that gets uh identified. Or this is a medium priority, this is a low priority, and that's a way kind of focusing on the implementation component of it, the action component of it. And getting those things done, cause you know, lots happened since this was adopted, has diverted the city's attention to other things, you know. Whether that's staffing or pandemic or just other kinds of things, and so it seemed like there still are a lot of action items in there that could be. Identified and prioritized and and that would be a significant accomplishment, honestly. As opposed to.
Um correct, which is update. Not revision, just update.
It's like update that how things are, as Brian was saying, how things are accomplished and like being able to, I don't know.
How we use it.
How we use it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that can be revised and include be.
Cause most residents do not know of the comprehensive plan or even that. Done, I mean, majority of, a lot of my neighbors are like, oh, what? Where do you even find it? How is it being used?
Have there been uh any new required chapters other than transmission lines and airport or? Like I, we we did amend and add an airport chapter. Um but I don't think we got to transmission lines.
I don't think anybody actually knows what to do with that.
And that's probably why.
That's an easy job.
Yeah, right.
See Idaho pop.
Yeah. Did you? I look like you're about to speak, but yeah.
Oh, I just thought that it encompasses a number of things and uh that people have expressed interest in and they're still outstanding and so it's. There's a lot of. Work already in there that probably needs to be addressed, which you know.
So the, if we were to do an update, just to, is there with your intention of this, is there a way to take all this information that is still outstanding? To be worked on um and get it into kind of a soundbite style document that we could. Make more available to the citizens, like is is there a a com plan cheat sheet we could develop as well that? Has a little more information, cause that is a quite dense document to ask everyone to digest, but it is a commitment of the city that, okay, so. That'd be great.
Something that I need to emphasize.
For sure.
Like my favorite page was things I liked about Bellevue, things that would improve Bellevue. Uh that was, you know, that was kind of the. The shortened.
We had a a, you know, standing easel and and, you know, everybody just round table, you know, what do you like about Bellevue? And everybody just was throwing out those ideas. There is a good uh.
Things that would improve Bellevue, I think that's, that list is still true and a a good starting point for. Council and all of us to continue to work on too, as we're working on the com plan update.
Oh, look, things they like about Bellevue, volunteerism. Sign you up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Do you want that now or?
Okay, um we will move on to old business item eight B. Uh this is the continuation of public works. Request for funds for snowplow tires for our leased loader. I will give the floor to Public Works Director Chris Johnson.
Chris Johnson, Public Director. Um I had, I asked Amy to um attach another um bit. For a less far, it came in even cheaper than uh the previous ones, so. I appreciate the deliberation and um. Much while reaching out to us and saying, hey, where are you using this? Um it's nice that we're able to find a local for a better price and with um a better warranty. Any questions?
How fast are you after buying? It sounds like uh our. Things are gonna be a little breezy here.
They have informed me that with the potential um tariffs, that prices could. Go up exponentially, um so buying them now. Is getting better, um from our actual budget, um I have in vehicle maintenance and repairs. Um I just had all the truck tires, uh we were getting down to uh the nubs and outside of safe. Wearing distance and um we just put new tires on the TAF two fifties. Um they're giving us a fair deal and with the uh price marked down on these. Um it's probably better to do it now than try to wait till December or October. We're gonna use them, they're for snow, they're for mud, um and again, we're gonna have to put tires on this thing before we turn it back in, so we might as well begin. Tires actually let us do our job uh to the best of its ability and invest that equipment and then put back on the old tires before we. Return it on lease.
Is there money already allocated in your budget for this?
We're gonna have to make some adjustments, but there is money in um. There is money there. I just have to find the line I didn't work with Shelley on.
You tell me what that price are are recent. Well, versus the newest one?
Nine thousand. Something, it's it's in the packet.
Current one is ninety one hundred, the other one was close to sixteen thousand.
Yeah, so we could, we dropped another five thousand, basically. So we went through, first went through Western State's CAD directly, then we found a shop out of Burley. And now our local is the cheapest. And again, they're the only ones that are gonna respond at two o'clock in the morning if we have a blowout or have an issue uh when we're moving snow. They're right here, they have a great warranty. They're local, so it's a good deal.
I make mention, we approved the purchase of the tires for. Nine thousand one hundred fifty six dollars and forty six cents. Yes.
Council member Bergen?
Yes.
Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Council member Rudy?
Yes.
Council member David?
Yes.
Council member Ovino?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on to our new business section, um item nine A. Public Works Request for Funds for a Motor Grader. I will turn this over to you.
Chris Johnson, Public Works Director, um. So our current grader. Was manufactured in nineteen ninety eight, um basically the one that Casey learned how to drive when he was a. First starting out in the business, um.
Eighty eight or ninety eight?
Ninety eight, oh sorry, nineteen eighty eight. Eighty eight. Uh so we're looking at twenty five plus another twelve, so it's thirty seven year old machine. Um we're getting close to, there's certain. Parts of it that if they break, we're not gonna be able to replace, we replaced them enough times that the bolt holes and there's just not enough metal left to work on certain things. The reason I bring it to you this time versus waiting until budget season and um. Bring it to you after we put it in the budget. The timeline to get one of these ordered and delivered um is gonna be at least six months. So to to make sure we have one secured for this upcoming snow season, um we need to be putting in our request. There's three beds, uh two models are from Western State cats, um just different sizes and then. The third one is from um our John Deere. It comes complete with the implements that we need, uh the wing and then the e plow. Uh but the wing allows us to do, as we move snow throughout town. Um with our trucks and other vehicles, it piles up into burns, the wing allows us to come back in. And smooth those out, so when the next snow comes in, we can burn them back up, so it allows us to re. Allows us to move the snow more efficiently and have a better plow job. We use the grader for. Basically all all our roads, if we can get it out there, it's what we go back in after the snow falls and and it's been iced up that allows us to get the ice off. And and get down to cements quicker, um since we get that good slush day. We get on that thing and move as much as we can so we can get it off the road as clean as possible. Um this can be funded by all three departments, we use it uh down at the wastewater treatment plant. Um we have to use it to get out to the springs um to do our checks in our in our routes out there. Um we had to use it to get up to the tower, um the two fifties and the five, the fifty five hundred is too large of a. Truck with the sand bed and everything to turn around at the top of the tank and um. The two fifties, I just did not have the power, you push the snow, once it got up above the four foot mark on the burns and so. We use this and this is why we're asking for a e plow for the front of it, um to get back into the springs, um to clear the county road. Through the plant and around the treatment plant and then again, the wing to do cleanup in um. It really knocks that top off and makes the roads easier for the next year or next pile session of the season. Given the price of each one, the breakdown, um I'm recommending the John Deere, it's the breath best uh. Value for the money, um it took us about four weeks to get them to give us a quote because they were changing their financing and it's actually a better deal than they were offering. And again, with the tariffs and price increases. I believe we should act prudently if we are gonna discuss this. It is not a piece of equipment that uh you could really get secondhand, um and you don't know the. The type of. Work or the type of use that it's supposed to put into and we have spent enough money in the past. Trying to keep uh equipment from county road and bridge or state ITD stuff that. Does not really meet our needs, um with the lease it guarantees a service contract. Um we know what we're gonna have to budget for each month and into the future. And we know we're gonna have a a piece of equipment that we can rely on. I understand it is a large number.
It's a big number.
But, you know. It's one of these things that. It takes ferocity, uh and it add, if we do not have this piece of equipment, we cannot continue the level of service that we provide to do our snow removal. As we build our public works department and get off of our subcontract sometime in the future, we will need this piece of equipment to do main street. And it's an investment into the city, that's what it is.
So can you, if you don't mind, can you explain like the difference? So we get this piece of equipment. How much could that save us on? It's no fun main street and not hiring contractors, like could we?
But right now we're due to lack of staff, we don't have the number, the bodies to get out there. At night and then come back in the morning and clean everything up, so what we're trying to do, what we've done this year. Um Lunsford is doing Main Street and um some of the alleys and they also do Chantrelle and. Um River. The River Estates, Riverview Estates, um and then. The streets team does basically everything east of town. Um all the way up to Strayhorn, Cowcatcher, Pine and um all the artillery, all the art. Areas, so east, west and north, south roads on the east side of Highway seventy five.
And for our fees. Request for bits, isn't this a personal, isn't this a. Governed by uh Idaho code because of the size of the purchase?
Yes, that's what we got, uh I've gotten three bids there.
Through ads in the paper, you got ready?
There's only, there's only certain representatives, we have John Deere and CAT that makes these pieces of equipment. And so we solicited to the regional uh vendors for CAT and for John Deere.
Well, I I think there's actually requirements, so it's. Title sixty seven, chapter twenty eight of Idaho code for purchase of the size have to be advertised.
I thought it was for contracts.
Yeah.
Not for, not for a piece of.
For personal property, which is the city's personal, right, wouldn't this be?
This is equipment, uh personal property would be, would it be?
Yeah.
No, this applies to. Brackets, title sixty seven, chapter twenty eight. How much is it?
My iPad went dead on me somewhere. What what's the amount of you?
Range between four ten and five twenty. Through the different bins.
The only other thing too, I thought even with, when we're considering purchases. That it's important to be able to have a copy of like the budget and look at. It, cause this is a capital out, this would be considered a capital outlay, right? So we need to be looking at the budget from. That would, like we would.
And where the balloon payment would hit, right? Well, this would all be budgeted for next year.
Yeah.
So it's. For next, in next year, so that final balloon payment would be due next year?
No, it would be budgeted in next year's budget, so so the intention of the request is to get. Approval to get an order in. And as we're working through budgeting for. Twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, we would work this into the twenty five, twenty six budget.
So you're saying the method of payment is not relevant now, that it's currently structured as a balloon payment would not be something to evaluate now? Only during the next budget?
Yeah, but it now.
Balloon payments of the fifth year.
Is it? I haven't even seen the.
Yeah, it's in the fifth year. Well, this one, there's. There's depending on your options. So you have a forty forty eight and a sixty option.
Yeah, I think uh. Sections to, and I think you need to go out to see if there's. It's inaccessible behind fifteen thousand.
Yeah, they just raised that limit too, they raised that.
For a piece of equipment?
With his personal property.
Uh it's fine, I just wanted to show you guys what the numbers are looking at, cause we're moving into budget season, that's not an action item to approve tonight.
Yes, the Chris is the, is anybody else in the state bid on any of these?
Uh we were, we we have two vendors, uh Kat.
Right, but somebody in the state might have put out a.
Another jurisdiction. I think it's what he's.
Oh, yeah, we could probably talk to I like the. With our.
ITD.
The uh with the two truck two thirties, uh we piggybacked on the either Meridian or Boise.
Yeah, if they bought one and gone through the competitive bidding process and then you can.
I will follow up on that.
And there are a couple, uh there's several websites that list um relatively. Low hours um vehicles that are used, Richie List and.
We've gone down.
There was particular devices, I think, too.
And then it comes down to the financing options that they offer, cause a lot of them, you have to have the funds or. Um we have to secure somebody else that's gonna purchase it like we did with the fifty five hundred, where they purchase it and then lease it to us, so. I'll look into that, but um I'll follow up with Rick on that. Competitive bid, which city has already completed, cause I think uh. Sun Valley may have done it, cause they just, they just bought one, um or another Shunko equipment that's very similar, so.
Yeah, I just asked if each one of the vendors at the end. Supplying these Chinese cities or something under the competitive bid and find out.
Um I also think, one second, Diane has her hand up.
Sorry, but yeah. Thank you, um Chris, I had a question for you with regard to ordering this piece of equipment, I would assume there's some sort of. Reservation fee or some kind of deposit that we would have to pay?
I think we're going to the contract lease agreement, I don't think there's a down that needs to go with it.
Okay.
But like, I said, uh Sun Valley bought a piece of equipment, they were supposed to get it, uh I think October, they just came in. So they didn't get us, they didn't get it for the season.
Okay.
You know, there's some still options to look at, but um my main goal was to get these quotes to show you that how much this is gonna cost us. And the one that we're using also, um I felt mentioning, I think I may have done it in the staff report there, there. It's a two wheel drive and. It's pretty sketchy when you see Casey driving that thing and the wheels are off the ground and it's sliding and he's moving it, so. Again, saving. Again, safety, so we don't run into vehicles, um, whatever stuff, why I went with the all-wheel drive option. And these do come with these snowplow tires and everything, we'll make sure that we get um the needed equipment. On the first purchase instead of like we did with the motor.
Suzanne, you have a follow-up question?
I think it just also would be helpful if you can provide a little bit more detail, I think with that large of a purchase. It's, it's not, they're not traditionally designed for snow removal, as you know better than I do. And um, so does it make sense maybe for you to look at a few um more pieces of equipment, like a snowplow that's dedicated? We, we have paved roads for the most part, so motor graders, which are typically for leveling things, maybe there's some consideration for. More specific pieces of equipment at that price point.
Well, we can look, but I mean. They're not, they're typically used for snowplow, you can see to go down to the county, um, while they have three of them, um, each of the cities municipalities. They have graders that they use for snow removal, um. It becomes the ability, it has more articulation than some of the big plow trucks, um, we. Are out, not our alleys, we don't cloud the alleys, but uh, with the size of our streets, with our corners, with um the. What do you call it, the um, the round things at the end of the cul-de-sac, um, you know, we have a hard time with larger equipment, that's why we've gone to the smaller trucks. And the fifty-five hundred instead of these used I D T, you know, three-ton trucks, you know? So we try and get the best for. Our ability for our streets for um, each city's gonna be different, um, but what the county does with their roads is completely different than what we have to do with our roads, just because of. All the pavement, so everything's driveway, um, the, the way that. Uh, that street, uh, that's, we have all those houses and trailers, one by one by one, that everybody puts three cars and a. Mailbox, how do you move all that snow around? And so having something that you can actually move it off the road. Get it to a corner where we can then come back in and remove it with a bucket and a, a dump truck, um, so it's. It's tailored very nicely for what we need, um.
And I'm mayor.
One second, Thomas.
Oh, sorry.
Um, it, it seemed like John Deere quoted what you wanted, basically, and Cat or Western States maybe didn't? Or they, they quoted something without, didn't have everything you wanted?
Correct.
It, do they not manufacture that or what?
Their add-on pieces, so with the John Deere, um, they could lease it all, is it one chunk of equipment, your cat? You buy the main piece and then you buy your accessories, and so we'd be buying the, the snowing and the deep plow.
Okay, I mean. If, if I'm understanding it right, the price is, is higher with John Deere because it offers what you want.
Yes.
Can we get a competitive bid, like, this is what we want, Cat, how can you quote that, even though it's?
I thought the additional pieces were on the cat, maybe not, but.
It does show them.
Wait, I can get whatever you want, Tom.
Yeah, you know, just kind of like, this is what we want and.
No, this is what they had to do with the, with the, the snowplow, uh, correct. We had one contract that was using our equipment and another contract that was using theirs, so the one looked more expensive because they were using their equipment. But then all our stuff was getting broke, so, you know, we went to a, a different contract, so it's the same thing, I can get, I can get the additional, um. I'll reach out to Western States Cat, I'll reach out to any other municipalities that have done the competitive bidding process and I will get you new numbers, but. I just wanted to let you guys know, this is not even a, a real ask, it's a need, um, if we want to continue the level of service that we provide.
So then, si- this is an action item and we'll just um see this on an upcoming agenda, no date certain, just. Little bit more information, I think, it's what we're looking for.
I'm good. We did it with the fire truck, we, this is what we want, we advertised it for two weeks, the paper, the bids came out, we have one bid. Uh, no, which, which is good, because we didn't have to take out, I mean, it's pretty, it's a two-week process. Mountain Express, it does the, whatever the title, whatever, anything that used to be fifty thousand dollars. Now I think it's twenty-five or something, they've changed it, um, you know, then. We did talk about this, the council, everybody, when we got the, the, the loader, when we leased the loader. That grader was on there also, so, I mean, it isn't something new, we've talked about it. Since Tammy and Sean and myself worked new here too, because we, you know, we spent thousands on that grader to keep it. You know, the one thing that, too, that he mentioned in his report about it, you know, you, you, you can't drive that thing. Casey can, because he grew up on it, there's like ten thousand levers in there, you know, it's, it's, one of the new ones is like driving all.
So I will, um, I suggest we continue to the April twenty-eighth meeting, does that give us enough time to? Is that our, would you, okay, and if neither, we can bump up further. Okay. Um, we have one final item, it is nine B, consideration of resolution number twenty-five dash twelve relating to surplus personal property. Declaring certain personal property of the city to be surplus, authorizing directing the disposal of the surplus property, um, Amy Phelps, City Clerk.
Um, pretty simple, we have a overflowing closet upstairs with old monitors. I literally, the first time I opened it, I think that something fell out on me, it's like this hole, but Shelley. You did really well organizing it, anyways, we have old monitors and then a few computers. And by statute, we have to get directive from council to get rid of it. Um, I recently also found out that if we have any information stored on the computers that are up there, we have to um wipe the information, so. There are certain things we can do, yeah, Councilmember Reed can help me with that, or we can mash it with a hammer if we get.
No, you, you know, if you're just gonna dispose of it, you can, you can physically destroy it, but if you're trying to donate or do that.
So I'm gonna look into the options for donating it, I talked to Tammy a little bit, we might coordinate, um. Pledge of thanks or concern.
The, the cell phones can be, can be donated also. Credit is given through, I mean, like, I can just, like, the hotlines, money gets donated to the hotline for it, so.
I can comment, most of them are outdated enough, they can't even be updated.
It doesn't even matter.
Be useful to anyone.
They still keep them, so, yeah.
And it's the same with the computers and the monitors, you would laugh at what you would see in that cupboard up there, some of it is so old that um, most of it's not really usable, yeah.
So I would, I would move to approve resolution twenty-five dash one-two.
I second it.
Um, relating to surplus, the disposal of surplus property.
Okay.
Hi.
Hey.
Wait, hold on, roll call.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Odena.
Yes.
President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
You mentioned that.
Yes, I make most of your point.
Second. Third.
Well, hold on, all in favor?
Uh, thank you.